At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item would be consider the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting as well as a work session that the council both were held on March 14th. Council does have the minutes to both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to the note?
Move to approve as written.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to approve. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda, bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda, and they include the vacation of utility easements in Stonebridge Estates, receiving the petition and calling for a public hearing, consider the request of shades of the past car club for the June 2nd, 2023 cruise and June 3rd, 2023 car show, consider approving the memorandums of agreement between the city and LALS Local 425 approving the Juneteenth as a holiday, this will be in 2024. Also would be consider the resolution that would approve the alongee to the note, the proposed amendment to Series 2005, the SMSU Foundation Note. This is a conduit bond that SMSU has for their housing. Also on would be consider the resolution accepting Nathan Holden as a member of the PERA, Public Employees Police and Fire Plan, consider the resolution calling for a public hearing on street reconstruction plan, tax abatement and issuance of general obligation bonds, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project names. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number nine, consider the authorization to advertise for bids for the wastewater Highway 23 lift station improvement project. I'll call first on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works and City Engineer, and then if you want to involve Scott, you can do so at your choice.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So Bolton Mink has prepared bid documents for the Highway 23 Lift Station Improvements Project that we have included in our 2023 capital improvement plan. The general scope of the project is to remove and replace the four existing pumps in the lift station, rehab the wet well, rehab and line the wet well, and then update electrical systems and carry out all necessary bypass pumping while we take that lift station offline for this project. Project estimate at this point is $580,000. We're proposing to charge engineering fees of 8% on the project for a total of $626,400 in our current estimate. Reason for the lower engineering fees is it's anticipated that the wastewater department would carry out most of the construction inspection duties. We'll just help where we need to and help get the project bid as we have to date. Fees would also cover Bolton and Mink's expenses. The CAP included $350,000 for this project. Since that time when the CAP was put together, we've started to build the project and tighten it up, and expenses have grown a little bit. If there's questions regarding that, we can try to help address them, but I would say that the wastewater budget is capable of absorbing this difference between estimate and current budget. We've had numerous things in our CAP come in favorably this year for the wastewater budget, and on the aggregate, the budget looks strong to accept this project and move forward with this improvement. As you indicated, Scott Trudson, our wastewater superintendent, is here as well, so if you have any questions for him or I, we can try to address them. But we'd recommend to authorize to move forward and advertise for bids and come back at the end of April with bids.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason or Scott?
I have a question. So you have in the CAP $350,000 for this. So you're assuming this is going to be $230,000 to $300,000 over budget?
Correct. You know, we hope that our estimate is high. You know, Bolton and Mink has told us as much, that they feel like this is a comfortable estimate. You know, we, if you want to go through specifics, we did have the mill and overlay throughout different wastewater facilities in the budget that we had $150,000 budgeted. We're actually going to spend $56,000. We got a sales tax refund that we'll probably talk about later in the meeting of over $200,000. Line and third, we budgeted a little over half a million, and we're expecting less than $400,000 of wastewater expenses. Lion Circle was budgeted for $35,000, and we're probably moving away from that project for this year. So when you just add these things up, we're well allocated to cover the difference between original estimate and current cost.
What I'd like to see now is a little extra, but when the bids come in, obviously we don't have the bid prices yet, so maybe we'll get a really low bid. I would like to see that broke down so we can figure out where this is coming, because we're over budget, and we had another project just two weeks ago over budget, that we've got to really start watching these over budgets. So if you could have that broke down when the bids come in, I'd be most appreciative so we can make a good decision.
Sounds good. Yep.
The other background on this, this project is this trunk sewer line was really put into place as the community grew, and it was kind of the critical action happened in the 1993 floods when the main lift station, which is by Justice Park, was completely overwhelmed. And the community was growing, so that's when the trunk sewer line that was constructed that took the waste that was generated in the south part of the community, all the way from Etrus to the area, including the area that has grown since that residentially, as well as the Walmart, Shopko, you know, Menards area and all the way over. So without that project, the community really didn't have the capacity to handle the wastewater. So it's been a good project, and it's gravity-fed all the way to that lift station, and then it's pumped from that point further out, all the way to County Road 33, and then over to the wastewater plant. So, so my question really was, would be the contingency during the replacement of these pumps is how will the functionality of the lift station be accommodated? You know, should we have a, you know, a heavy storm event during that time that would have inflow and infiltration that would overwhelm the system?
Would you like me to take that, Scott? Okay. We are working, Scott and I have been talking with Bolton and Mink about ensuring that we have enough pumping capacity built into the project that our contractor comes in prepared to not only pump the normal flows that go through the station, but also be prepared to handle maybe peak station capacity. So in case we do run into an event during construction that we don't have inadequate bypass pumping, so we want to convey to them that here's a typical number, a lower number that we typically run through the station, but here's where it could go to, and we want the risk to be on them to make sure that they can, they can convey wastewater and not have issues.
Okay. Thank you. Other question for Jason?
Well, I do, because as Bob knows, I've been through sewer backup, so if we convey that risk onto that contractor, if there happens to be a problem with the system, will he be liable for it then?
We believe so, and those are the conversations we'll have with Bolton and Mink to make sure we feel good about what we're proposing. And we don't want to overdo the pumping either and pay a lot of money. We're finding that the bypass pumping is a pretty expensive feature this project and probably one of the areas where we missed on the estimate. But we'll, we'll work on that. We want to make sure that we don't have any issues.
What's, what's the project timeline for this? So we get the bids out in April, and then when would construction start?
Yeah. And I don't know, Scott, do you want to come up and talk about timeline a little bit? It's, it's for this year, but maybe you want to talk about...
Right. But the reason I ask is, is a segue to what we've just been talking about. Historically, the last five years, you know, we get really wet spring, really wet June, and then bloop, it just dries up. So I'm thinking if you're doing, if you want to mitigate past performance, it's not an indicator of future performance, but it seems to be a five-year trend that it dries up in July and August. You know, construction during those times kind of minimizes the risk as much as you can with our past weather patterns.
Yep. Mayor and Council, there's a couple of things that with this project, one is the extended timelines to getting equipment, like a switchgear for the generator that we're going to replace, that's like 26 weeks out just to get it. The pumps are delayed too. And then, yes, what you're saying is we're looking at towards the fall. We typically have a little drier weather. So that's why the timeline is to get the bids out there, get bids on it, but then have the completion in the fall, so.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Couple of questions before you can sit down. So thinking about the bypass pumping, we have our own in-house capacity, even I'm thinking about our sludge handling setup, and when we went to the dragline delivery, how many, how many feet of reel or holes do we have on reel there? Is it a half mile, three quarters of a mile?
It'd be about a half.
Half mile?
Not enough for something like this. We're looking at, we're looking back at our records. Typically, the flow is in that 800 gallons per minute range. So we're proposing with Bolton and Mink of about 1,000 gallon per minute pump is what we'd like to see. But then if we, when all four pumps kick in, we're up to about 3,300 gallons a minute. So we want to have that capacity. So and as Jason mentioned, that's where it gets expensive, but we figure that the liability of, you know, we don't want to cause a backup if we did happen to have a storm in the exact time that we're doing this project, so.
Yeah.
And being 23 is, that station is serving the area it is, we really can't connect it to the main lift. And even if we could, the main lift will probably be struggling at that time too, so.
Okay. So are they going to put a bypass port in out there temporarily that they connect into rather than doing drag holes, or what are they, what's the proposal?
The current thought is to remove the, the top casting on a manhole ahead of the lift station, drop in a submersible pump there, maybe two, and then go over to an air relief valve that's downstream of where the lift station is, and just pump into that.
Okay. What capacity is the pump you have for sludge handling?
Oh, boy, that's a good question. They pump 800 gallons a minute easily.
Is that a screw pump or piston?
It is a centrifugal.
Centrifugal pump. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions for Jason and/or Scott?
The only one I have is, is on tail with Councilman Lozinski. I think going forward, when we have these overages, and we've had a couple of them now, it's going to get tighter and tighter. You know, we looked through the agenda today, there's a couple of change orders that are my anti-change orders, and those are going to start adding up. And I get it, things are expensive and going up, but that's why we really need to start pinching. So one request I'd have coming forward into meetings when we have something like this, and there's funds that we've saved, like Jim said, if we can just have those detailed beforehand, that'll really help me in my decision making. So, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of the authorization to advertise for bids for the wastewater Highway 23 Lift Station project. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 10 is the school pedestrian crossing signage and improvement project. We have a change order, the final change order to consider, as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. This project consisted of the installation of the RRFB school pedestrian crossing improvements at four locations, the Marshall Middle School, Southfield Elementary, Parkside Elementary, and True Light Christian School. And this project started numerous years ago, probably six years ago, with grant application and working out agreements with the schools to participate. You've got this, the enhanced crossing locations with medians and ADA compliant ramps, as well as school zone blinking signage that's placed around the schools. So a good project. I think it went pretty well, all in all. It went a little later than we would have liked, and we had to work on that, but it was a good project. The project was funded in part with a $384,000 Transportation Alternatives Grant. The local share of the costs that remain will be covered by our state aid account. With this final pay request number four, you have a total contract of $495,278.67, which is an increase of a little over $15,000 from the original contract amount of $488,250.35. We would recommend to approve this final payment and the final change order, and if there's any questions about the project, we can try to address them.
And in addition to the, the state grant through the Department of Transportation, it was also a partnership with the school district.
Thank you, Mayor. I left that part out. The schools each paid a participating share in this project. The total share of all the schools combined was a little over $43,000.
Thank you. Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the final change order, acknowledge the final pay request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 11, consider the approval of the Questico, I probably am mispronouncing that, budget proposal, and delegate the authority to the city administrator to negotiate the terms of the agreement and execute the final negotiated agreement. With that, EJ, are you going to start with this or Sharon?
Yes.
That's all I'm calling. EJ Moberg, the Director of Administrative Services. EJ.
Thank you. So finance staff have explored governmental budgeting software to hopefully improve our budgeting process. We'd like to ideally house our operating, our capital, and our personnel budgets under the same software product. Right now, as you know, the operating system, our operating budget is put into our in-code or accounting software. We have a separate software system for the capital improvement plan projects, and then personnel is usually done with spreadsheets and then input manually into our software. We see advantages of this from the idea of being able to potentially do multi-year budgeting, so we can project two to three years out to kind of see the impacts of different decisions, whether it be equipment or personnel and those types. Also, just having them under, under one thing would be help our decision-making, to help us reduce risk as we make decisions, and then also just improve our processes and functionality for touching the different pieces at different times. We did get proposals from two different companies. The one before you that I'm bringing forward as a recommendation today is a five-year agreement with Questica. The year one cost would be $24,625. Proposal would be to take that out of liquor store profits as a funding source for year one, and then years two through five would be part of the operating budget for, for 2024 and beyond as part of that process. The other company that we got a proposal from was a shorter period upfront for three years. The costs were a little bit higher, and then their annual increases were higher as well throughout the process. So yes, the recommendation is to approve the resolution, to accept, accept the proposal, and then delegate the authority to city administrator or her delegee to finalize the, the agreement. We have spent some time, I have spent some time with our IT advisor as well as legal staff to make sure the agreement is going to meet our legal requirements as well as address policy or risk concerns we had with any, any of the language.
Okay. Thank you, EJ. Questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. So there's a list of other Questica customers. Did you get a chance to reach out to any of those other ones, to see what they thought about the program, if they liked it?
In talking to Questica, I know some of these were fairly new to the system, where they just started last fall. I didn't, I did not reach out to any of them particularly. I am familiar with a couple of them from having worked with counties. I know Crow Wing quite well, or some of the people up there. I just had not reached out. This was hands down, out of what we explored and got quotes from, this was the better fit, I, I thought, as well as the finance director thought.
Other questions?
I guess the question I have is if we spend this money, are we saving that much in staff time? I mean, obviously, it's kind of an unknown, but that's the question. If we're going to spend $25,000, are we going to save $25,000?
Perhaps not in year one, obviously, with getting everything set up and to flow and to work, but I believe in future years it would. Right now, it's a very manual, intensive process of, of hand entering pieces or getting information back in some cases that's handwritten as opposed to even in spreadsheet, to then enter that material, where if, when we digitize this process, it should help from that standpoint in future years, yes.
And then the, back onto that question, since it wasn't in the budget this year, why wouldn't we just put it into the budget and wait till next year? Because it seems like we keep dipping into this liquor store profits, and kind of we're doing cameras out of it, and we're doing this, and at what point?
Yep.
Are we out of liquor store profits? Because, and we keep dipping into it.
Right. We did look at that since the budget process just obviously got done in December, and looking ahead already, this is about a 14-week implementation. So we'd be looking at having this implemented by mid-June, which is when the next budgeting process starts. So this is really the last chance to do it for 2024. We did consider holding off to do it again, but we thought since we're talking about the ideal situation of being able to have multi-year budgets and seeing some of those impacts, you know, for example, with personnel for cost of living allowances, or just capital projects, for what that could mean to the budget, we thought it was worth pursuing to see if this is something the council wanted to move forward on today.
This also has been a, a recommendation, I believe, with our, with our bond council when it comes to ratings, and there's a potential benefit there.
Yes. The, during a bond rating call we had last year for that issuance, we were asked about multi-year budgeting and the like. I told them it was something I'd like to work forward or work towards, but I wasn't sure how quickly we'd get it going.
Craig?
Yeah, just a comment, I guess, or an observation is that, you know, I, Jim raised a really good question about, you know, what is the cost savings? And as I think about that, our staff time is really pretty set, you know? So as far as savings, there's not a lot of savings. It's what work refocus happens based on the tools that we give them to do the work. I think probably this, if there's any place to add something into the budget, when we're into a tight budget, tracking our budget is probably the smartest place to do it. We're going to be asking a lot of questions in the next couple of years, the what-ifs financially, and if we can get better prediction tools that when we make a request on Monday or even Tuesday morning before a meeting, we've got a better chance of getting some accurate information. So out of all the things we're looking at that we're adding numbers to increase, this is one place I guess I'm willing to make that investment, because I think hopefully it'll give us better answers as we get on the road and make better choices.
Any other questions for EJ? If not, thank you, EJ, for your research on this. You've made a recommendation to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
I move we approve the budget proposal and delegate authority to negotiate the final terms of the agreement and execute the final, final agreement.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
Well, the only, I do think this is a good program, but I'm not going to support this, because we keep going outside of our budget parameters, and at some point, we made a budget last for that. I believe we should stick to it. And if you build it into the budget for 2024, I think it'd be a good thing to do, but it's not in the budget this year.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 12, appointments to various boards, commission, bureaus, and authorities. So prior to the last meeting, and then prior to this meeting, the joint committee between the school board and the city council met and interviewed applicants for the Joint Powers Board, the Community Services Board. And based on, on those interviews, I will make the following recommendation, and the similar recommendation is being made to the school board for their November 3rd meeting. And my recommendation would be that Josh Colton and Aaron Vander, Vanderveen be appointed to the Community Services Advisory Board to terms that will end February 28, 2025, and that Heather Anderson, Amanda Schwartz, and Caitlin Giles be appointed to the Community Services Board for terms that will expire February 28, 2026. Offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? The only discussion point would be, this is five new members on the Community Services Board, and that board now will be complete.
And Bob, just to point a clarification, I think you said that the school board meets on November 3rd. I think you meant April 3rd.
I say November. I meant April.
Okay. I figured you did, but just for the good of the, of the group, I wanted to make sure that we clarify that so it doesn't show up in the minutes as needing to be corrected.
What I was thinking, yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.
And I just wanted you to know I was listening.
Well, good. With that, we'll move then to Commission Board, the ASN reports. Craig?
I don't have anything to report on new meetings, but I just want to, our discussion is budget overruns and budget and projects, and the PINT Committee will be meeting tomorrow to discuss projects and expenditures. So it is on all of our radars, and, and I think we're, we're working hard to do good city management and project management and to hopefully make, continue to make good choices. So just kind of put that in the note, that we will be looking at that tomorrow again to try to bring back some good solutions.
Okay. Steve?
EDA met. My other two had not. At EDA, we, I'll split it with Councilmember Schroeder here, but we talked about Shopko and the renovation in the old Shopko building. Harbor Freight is getting close to moving in. They are only one of, I believe, three tenants that are going to go in, that we don't have the other two quite down yet, but they're still working on that. They had a daycare provider appreciation event last Friday at Brow, and that was well-attended and well-appreciated, and I think the daycare providers appreciated that. We continue to work on developing ways to get more people, more businesses, more activity into Marshall, and in that regard, the staff is going to do a community server, or community video project, along with community services, on a whole bunch of things that we're doing and hoping to do and getting involved there. The pool is one of them, because that's, benefits everybody. So, yeah, I'll leave the rest for Amanda.
I guess I'll mention the Main Street Revitalization Grant. I know that it's been talked about and in the paper, but there's going to be open houses. It looks like there was one already. Nope, they're both done already. They were done the 20th and the 27th, so I hope that businesses went and got informed, and we hope to allocate some funds for East College Drive to be improved.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Yeah, MMU staff met last week, and they had a pretty full agenda. They have created and presented to the commission for consideration a new mutual aid policy for the utility. And they work with FEMA and other, other divisions to, when, when they get reimbursed for the work they do. They, the management team presented a 2022 year-end report for the commission. In the report, major accomplishments and goals for each department were presented. They approved for recommendation to the city council, a new Western Area Power Administration or WAPA designated entity contract. And the Marshall Solar Plus project, the contract for construction has been signed, and a scheduled completion timeline set for the fall of 2024.
and a scheduled completion timeline set for the fall of 2024. Construction will start in August of 2023. This is a 10-megawatt solar farm with 5-megawatt battery storage addition. Total cost for the project is $40 million. And they received a sales tax refund, which I believe Jason alluded to earlier, and if he wants to respond on that.
Sure. Thank you, councilman. So the water treatment plant project was completed, let's say, a year and a half ago. That was a pretty expensive project. MMU worked with their contractor to submit for a, there's a production exemption through the Department of Revenue, so they submitted materials costs, and the contractor obviously paid sales tax on some of those items, and they submitted to get refunded for some of those costs. It's a great deal for the city marshal, because as most of you are aware, we were large contributors financially to that project through the wastewater fund, because the major reason for doing that softening, the enhanced softening portion of the project, was to reduce chloride discharge through our wastewater plant, which we're still working on today. So we were owed a portion of that. I don't remember the total number that they were refunded. It was over $300,000. The city marshal wastewater department received $205,614.25 back from that refund, which is great news for the city.
Very good. Anything more, John?
No.
And when you mentioned the WAPA delegation, because that's a contract that goes beyond one year, that will come back to the city council for approval. Thank you, John. See?
I don't have anything we haven't met.
Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, let's start with you.
I just hope summer comes, or spring comes. That's all I have.
Well, see?
I don't have anything.
John?
No.
Craig?
Councilmember Lozinski assured me this afternoon that spring has arrived.
I did.
So, just saying.
There have been alleged Robin sightings, so...
Well, he dug a basement in another town about our same latlan. Well, anyway, we're about the same distance from the equator, so there's hope.
Six inches of frost, there is hope.
Yep. Unfortunately, I hear there's a little storm coming on Friday, so let's make sure we clean those sidewalks and make sure that...
You're not supposed to use that four-letter S-word.
I know, I didn't say...
You're always such a positive person.
Prepare for the worst and hope for the best, right? So, yeah.
Fun record.
And that's all. I don't have anything else.
Amanda?
I don't have anything.
I'll have a couple of things. First off, and I know we've had quite a bit of discussion this evening about budget. I think it's also interesting that we follow the legislature and the bill that has passed the House and is in consideration in the Senate to increase local government aid. The impact of that for the city of Marshall, EJ, or Sharon, is in excess of a half a million dollars that we would receive in 2024.
Is that the final? Is it still that amount? I didn't see the new run.
I believe that's what it passed the House.
You know, and of course, nothing's final until it's final, but there is broad support recognizing that local government aid has lagged behind inflation for many, many years, and so this is an adjustment that does have a direct impact on the property tax levy, because it is general fund revenue. Secondly, another bill that's in the legislature is the workforce development, that has been proposed and supported by the Southwest Council of Mayors, that has received favorable reception. There's been three hearings at this point in the Senate and one in the House, so things look positive right now, as things look positive for the sales tax extension. But again, with all these things, until the legislature adjourns, which is scheduled on May 22, we will never know for sure until that happens. And then finally, since the weather came up, and Jim, I'm going to ask you to come up, and I'll kind of tee you up a little bit. As you saw in Administrator Hanson's administrative report, we did have a meeting on Friday with the relevant staff that are involved in preparation for possible flooding, and involved in that would be not only our Director of Emergency Management for the city, Chief Jim Marshall, but also Sharon was involved, EJ was involved in that meeting, of course, Jason Anderson and Scott Truittson were involved. Hopefully, I'm not missing someone.
Dean.
Oh, Dean Cudren, yes. So we had a good discussion, and I think the, I'll call on Jim to, you know, make a few comments, and then we can fill in, the rest of us, on things that maybe need to be filled in. But one of the things that Jim did was make connections with one of the experts at the National Weather Service in Sioux Falls, who gave us a pretty complete overview of not only the risk factors, including the amount of moisture that's on the landscape and the snowpack, the frost depth, as well as the other factors that would allow the moisture to maybe be absorbed and not necessarily run off. So he did a very complete, and probably reassured us at this point, but I'd also pointed out the risks that we have with the unknowns going forward, as far as the speed of the melt and potential rainfall when it warms up. So go ahead, Jim.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily prepared for this, but just a couple of comments. You know, it's ironic, because about a week ago, Jason and I had met and had some conversations about what the spring is going to look like for us, and then they had a conversation with Mayor, we did through an email, so we set up this meeting. And, you know, there's been a lot of things put in place, to the Mayor's credit, over the last 30 years, to mitigate a lot of the concerns that we have within our community. And yet, with all those things in place, there still brings some anxiousness to us as we always come to springtime. And so planning, preparing is important. You know, we've done a great job over the years of responding to a lot of the issues, and we're usually pretty comfortable in our response, I think, I'm hoping, Jason, to this point, but the individual, Andrew Kalin, who's now our kind of representative from the National Weather Service, did a great job with his presentation, again, and kind of brought some calm to maybe our thoughts and position at this point in time, and gave us maybe hopeful outlook. You know, it's always the uncertainty of what, the severe weather that follows here soon in the spring, and usually April is our severe weather awareness month, and, you know, we know what's happened to communities around us, and that's always a concern that we watch closely. And I joke a little bit, but it is somewhat true, where I say Alex Peterson is our in-house meteorologist. Alex really knows weather, and he tracks it very well. So anytime that there is a significant event that we think is coming, we usually stage at our emergency operations center, and Alex and maybe a couple of us will gather and watch it as close as we can to keep everybody informed. So I don't know if there's any other specific questions, but we're watching things closely.
March 29 was the Compre Brown County...
Yes, yes.
...stadium tornado. And the next day, they had five inches of snow.
That's right.
So, thank you, Jim. Any questions that anyone may have for the team, and again, Alex was involved in that meeting also on Friday?
Yes.
So the take-home message is that, at least right now, we're well-prepared. The risk is low for a flooding event, but our staff is anticipating and prepared in case the risk factors would increase.
Right.
So, thank you. With that, then, we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
A couple items that will come before council. We did once again meet with Schwan's to discuss the aquatic center land purchase, and we have Dennis Simpson, our land attorney, working on this agreement, and we are hoping to bring it back to the council on April 11. It does have conditions in there, based on successful approval of a referendum for the aquatic center. So some good conditions to protect the city. And one additional item on EDA board, they did do strategic planning in-house, and we've got a pretty good framework. They're going to review it one more time at their April meeting, and we'll bring it to the full council as well. And probably, hopefully, before budgeting, we talk a little bit about our own strategic plan before then. One other item on our aquatic center, we have had some informal discussions about private fundraising to help supplement some of the sales tax revenue, and possibly some timing with the funding, and I think there might be some really good community interest. And so we're going to talk to the Marshall Community Foundation about being a partner with the city on potentially seeking out some donations. So that is something that we're working on, and we'll share that with the community services advisory board, as well as they meet, have their first meeting next week. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you. Just two items. The first is that the airport SRE building bid opening is on April 3, when those bids come in and they're evaluated. We'll plan to bring those on April 11 to council for consideration. Other item, pre-construction meeting is scheduled for Thursday, this Thursday, at 9:30 a.m. with our contractor for the downtown construction project and all the utilities. Prior to that, at 8 a.m., we've invited the business community downtown to come in and hear from us about the proposed start date, and the contractor will be present as well, as well as some of our MMU and city utility staff. So we'll have a good presence, and we'll be inviting them. They've been invited to show up at 8 a.m. on Thursday to get kind of a kickoff meeting, and we're also really hoping to make sure we get good contact information for everyone in the project area, including email address. And the contractor, RNG Construction, Scott Mathewitz, has made it very clear that he intends to use email frequently as the best and quickest way to communicate as the project changes and things change. Right now, they're tentatively planning to start the project on April 17. So as long as spring arrives, we'll be starting a project downtown pretty, very shortly. They'll start on Third Street by Third and Main, and they'll actually look to close both blocks of Third Street at the same time, is what their proposal is. And we'd like to present that to the group and the business owners, and take feedback, and find out how we can make sure that we grant access while we do this. So, any questions for me? I can answer them, but that's all I've got.
Okay, any question for Jason? Okay. With that, then, we'll continue moving on the agenda. You have the remaining items on the agenda, the cash and investment report, the public housing commission minutes, the building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings, again, for the council's review. Is there any other business to come forward this evening from the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Amanda, seconded by Craig. To adjourn discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. We are adjourned.